This amazing city, let us now look to God in prayer. Eternal God, our Father, we honor you, God, we bless you, and we thank you for you are God and God all by yourself. It is you, oh God, that have said and declared that even government shall be upon your shoulders. And so, God, on today, we pray now your blessings to be upon this time together of city leaders and city business. God, we pray that you would infuse this place with your power, that all those who are here, oh God, would feel who you are, and that they will respond in a manner that pleases heaven. God, we pray now for the business that will go forth in this place on tonight. God, we pray that it will do and it will accomplish that which, Father, if it's blessed by you that you've sent it forth to do. God, we pray now for spirits of boldness to be upon these city leaders, oh God, that they will present and that they will, oh Father, put forth bold initiatives that will transform not only the lives of those in this city, but the lives of those that are connected and the lives of those in this world. God, we're praying for spirit of unity to be in this place because your word reminds us that it is where unity is, that you shall and you will command your blessings. So, Father, we pray your blessings upon our mayor, we pray your blessings upon all of our council representatives, we pray your blessings upon our police, and we pray your blessings, oh Father, upon the residents of this great community. Father, bless again this time together on tonight. Use us that we might be pleasing unto you. God, we ask that you do these things and do it for one reason and one reason only, for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please write the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is the republic for which stands one nation, oh my God, invincible with liberty and justice for all. Council meeting, need approval of the work session minutes?
Mr. President, move for approval.
Call if they raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need motion on the regular council meeting minutes?
Mr. President, move for approval.
Call if they raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to first start with news that is, I think, very relevant and important to our community. And that is, I want to comment on what took place in Buffalo, New York. I know Mayor Brown, we served together on the African American Mayor Association, where he serves as the treasurer, and I now serve as the second vice president. I think it's important for a city like ours, one that understands the heinous acts of domestic terrorism, and things that have taken place in this city, where we bring hundreds of thousands of visitors each year to learn about lynchings of black men and women in this country because of their race. I think it's very important for us to, as a community, to stand with citizens of Buffalo, to stand with their elected leadership as they try to recover from this mass shooting that was driven by hate, that was driven by a mindset of violence and one that is rooted in white supremacy. Two weeks ago, the President of the United States was here in Montgomery, landed on Air Force One. Today, he landed in Buffalo to console families of elderly people who were just shopping at the grocery store, returning from church and running the errands. And as much as we talk about the symbolism of things, the lessons that we've learned here in Montgomery in the state of Alabama, the danger of history is not learning from history and the perception that it cannot be repeated. And I think it's incumbent upon all of us that we repudiate, whether it be thoughts around white replacement theory or whether it be thoughts around hate and white supremacy, we've got to be vocal. And we can't stand in the shadows of the church that Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., pastor, and just speak to that when it's convenient and when it's calm and when it's comfortable. We have to learn those lessons that were carried out here in Montgomery, and we have to make sure that we stand in a place as a community that has had to come to grips with this. And as society and the rhetoric around politics and government and race changes gets heated and the vitriol becomes louder and louder, we have a responsibility in this city in particular because of our history in pointing those things out. Because as we sit by in silence and we become complicit in what is happening around us. And so, my heart goes out to Mayor Brown, my heart goes out to citizens of Buffalo and their leadership, in particular, retired police officer who was serving as a security guard in the grocery store, who did what he was trained to do only to be met with military-style armor and assault rifles. I believe that just as we are vocal about other issues that are happening abroad as well as here, we must do the same as it relates to what makes sense and what we send our men and women out to do every day in this city. When they're outgunned and we sit by and don't say anything about it, that's a problem. When they don't have the military-style gear and we ask them to go in and make these decisions at split second, that's something that we ought to stand up for. And I think when we consider what's happening around us, we need to not only pay more attention to it, we need to bring more vocal protest, and we need to think about what role we have to play as a local government, particularly in the city of Montgomery with our history in speaking out and being an example of what can be done right. So with that said, Mr. President, I would just ask if you would allow us to have just a brief moment of prayer for citizens of Buffalo, New York. Dear and Father, we come before you, thank you humbly for allowing us to see this day. We thank you for all of the men and women, not only here in our city, but in other cities, who are wrestling and pushing back against hate, who are pushing back against separatism, who are pushing back against all of the things that drop us apart. We ask you, please, cover the residents of Buffalo, New York, cover their leadership, and allow them to move forward in a space that will bring about greater discernment, not only love in the community, but how to move forward to prevent actions like this from taking place in other communities. We ask you, bless the families of those that were lost, and we ask you, bless them during this time of grief. To God, we ask you, continue to guide us as we try to make those decisions right here in our city, understanding the history that has happened in this nation and trying to prove upon it as we move forward as one body. We ask all these things, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. Mr. President, I will now get into the financial report that we have for the city of Montgomery. It is one that I think we can all be proud of, and it's one that I believe shows us to be on strong financial footing. And as we look at what is happening financially, we see that our projections are coming through, I think, at a very positive rate. And as we move closer to the end of the fiscal year, I believe that our numbers should be near what we have projected in our original budget. And we're more than seven months into the current fiscal year, and the abhorrent taxes as well as the business licenses have come in as expected. So we've collected 95% of the taxes and fees from the aforementioned revenue streams compared to the budget, and we're forecasting that the city will exceed the budget in both of those categories in fiscal year 2022. The budget to actual projection for revenue on the screen reflects a nearly $5 million over budget at fiscal year, at the end of the fiscal year, which is primarily due to how sales and use taxes have trended during the first half of the current fiscal year. Although lodging tax revenue is less than 4% of the total budget, this revenue has also aided in our city's revenue growth. Year-over-year sales and use taxes are trending slightly 7% more than the previous year, and lodging tax revenue is trending more than 50% year-over-year. Expenditures in the current year budget to actual are projected to be about half a million dollars less than break-even, which equates to a slight savings for the city. And since total revenue is trending more than 7% higher than the same time in FY 2021, and expenditures are projected to be slightly less than budget for department and non-departmental expenditures, it is projected that the city will be able to add a minimum of $4 million to its reserve, which is great news for us.
Great news.
Being able to add to the reserve will continue to put the city in a better financial position, and I'm committed to increasing the city's reserve with no less than $1 million each fiscal year. However, the more we can save now will ensure that the administration will reach its goal of getting the city's reserves closer to 20% of the general fund budget. Overall, the city is in much better posture financially than it has been in many years, and we thank all of the men and women who work for the city of Montgomery who have helped us in doing that, and we thank all of you, city council, for working with us as well. So thank you so much for this opportunity to present the finances. Not often that you get good news like this, but when you do, you want to share it because we know when bad news happens, it runs a lot faster. So this is some good news that we hope the public will take away and we can share with our residents across the city. Now for more good news, I want to bring about some students who have really shown a tremendous level of commitment and excellence in their academic pursuits. We know this is graduation time, and we wish all of the graduates who are completing, whether it be Montgomery Public Schools or our independent schools or even our home schools, much success in whatever path they may choose going forward. However, we did want to highlight a few students who have done just tremendous work, and we want to ask them to come up as well and take a picture with the council. And you can see by the number of scholarships they have and the amount awarded that they are not just your average student. They have done exceedingly well in what they have done. And so, I first want to acknowledge Mr. Mark Boggan from Brew Tech, who has received $447,000 in scholarships and was accepted to 15 schools. So Bob, would you please come up at this time, and we're going to ask you to stand right in front. I want to ask Caitlin Peterson from Brew Tech, who has received 400, and I'm going to round up, $450,000 in scholarships and has been accepted to 21 schools. And if Peterson could not be here, say Dad is here. So she's actually a scholar athlete, she's at the softball tournament for the state championship. So we wish her well. Mr. Willie Johnson from Booker T. Washington Magna High School, been accepted to 10 schools, and has received $226,000 in scholarship. Congratulations. And from Park Crossing, Castrol K.C. Crusoe, who has received $364,000 in scholarships and has been accepted to 13 schools. And I hope I'm saying this, is it Terron Wright? Okay, Terron Wright from McInnes, who has received $533,700 in scholarships and has been accepted to 13 schools. And this is all of the scholars that we're going to highlight tonight. So we'll get them a slide to the middle, we'll take a picture with the council, that's okay.
Congratulations, Al.
Again, we want to congratulate all of those scholars. We certainly want to thank their parents and the village that has supported them and lifted them up. We know that they didn't do it by themselves, and so we want to just highlight these positive stories that we have in our schools across the community, and we wish them well in whatever they do. And remember that they represent their families as they move on to higher heights. So congratulations again. At this time, we want to formally announce or introduce a couple of appointments that we've made and bring them before the council and also the public so they'll know who is doing what. And for the first time in two and a half years, we've got all the cabinet positions filled. So that is just how government can work sometimes. For those who want you all to do something in 30 seconds, it doesn't always happen like that. And we want to do things in 30 days, it doesn't always happen like that for us either. So it is good to finally have everybody on board to help us move this city forward. And first, I want to introduce our Economic Development Director, Darryl Washington. We were actually in a meeting just today with a CDFI talking about how we can bring opportunities to underserved parts of this community. West side and north side in particular are areas of this town that we believe have a lot of potential and just have not had the type of attention and investment that other parts of the city have had over the last few decades. And as we were talking to the CDFI, which is the Community Development Financial Institution, about things that they can help us out on, we talked about grocery stores, we talked about retailers, we talked about affordable housing, we talked about things that everyone wants to see in their neighborhood to not only provide a greater quality of life in place, but also improve opportunities for the residents that live there. And Darryl is a native of Birmingham, Alabama, with over 25 years of experience in economic development, and he brought to bear in that meeting some very salient points that really illustrate why I think he's going to be a tremendous leader for us in economic development. He has worked at various levels of economic development, including with Bell South, Economic Development Consultant for the city of Irondale, and most recently served as Director of District Development for Urban Impact in Birmingham's historic Civil Rights District. He's an active member of the International Economic Development Council, Economic Development Association of Alabama, and the National Main Street Center. And as you see, you continue in education certifications in economic development from both Auburn University and Georgia Institute of Technology. Darryl earned his BA degree in marketing from Morehouse College and a master's degree in public management from Birmingham Southern College. So Darryl, if you would, please stand up and let everyone see you at this time. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Yes?
Thank you, Mayor Reed. Let me just say I'm extremely humbled and excited for this opportunity to serve the citizens of Montgomery. Being from Birmingham, you know, I had a friend ask, why Montgomery? I said, why not Montgomery? I don't think enough people understand or realize the tremendous opportunities that are here in Montgomery. And so it's my job to illuminate and double down on what's working, come up with some creative programs. And as the mayor said, we want to balance revitalizing downtown as well as our neighborhoods. So this is day seven on the job, planning to meet with each counselor. Let's talk about economic development opportunities in your district. I'll be doing a whole lot of meeting with some of our strategic partners as well. So I'm just super excited to be here, and I look forward to working with everybody. Thank you.
Also, many of you know because he served as interim Parson Rec. Director, David Carr has now been named the permanent Parson Recreation Director. He was born in Tuskegee, Alabama, raised in Auburn, and has over 25 years of experience working national and international sports and hospitality organizations. He is experienced as a collegiate athlete, administrator, and coach, as well as international nonprofit organizations. David has had the pleasure of working for two Olympic drive organizations, the Special Olympics International and the Atlanta Committee for the Olympic Games. He's been married to Ilana Baker-Carr for 35 years this month, and they have two children, Adrienne and India, two grandkids, Anna and RJ. So David, I'll ask you to come on up and say a few words as well, if you would, to the council about your vision for Parson Recreation, some of the things you've shared with me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, councilors, thank you for your support in this endeavor for me to become your appointee, and I look forward to working with our citizens, and I appreciate all of your support as well. And we have lots of things that we're going to try to do at Parson Rec in terms of some changes. I look forward to working with all of our communities in the things that we have to do. And so I tell people that the great thing about this job, I didn't know it, was going to be that I'm a property manager now. So all we talk about is property, we want to make sure that our property is going to be first class in every way. So I look forward to working with everyone, thank you.
This is National Public Works Week, and when we think about all the employees, it's important to include our public works professionals. In times of emergency and even during some severe weather events, they're first on the scene and often last on the scene. And it's time to celebrate and elevate the hard work of all of these public works professionals and what they do. And as part of that, we want to speak to some of the issues that the council deals with quite a bit, and that's litter and grass. We're trying to work with the state of Alabama to address this issue in particular on those state thoroughfares that many people think are the city's responsibilities, but also, we know, the state's responsibility. So we're looking at innovative ways to really address that and partnerships to get the state to understand that in particular here in Montgomery, we're the government capital for the state, and they have invested interest in helping us help the city and the state look good, and we want their help, and I've received very positive responses to that. And in doing so, we're looking to overhaul the process for cutting the grass and picking up litter collection in particular as it relates to some of the busier thoroughfares that we see. But all this also means that our public works professionals are going to be asked to do more. And so we want to work with them as best we can to create that balance and to make sure that there aren't parts of the city that are left behind, there aren't parts of the city that are overlooked, while still trying to get our state government to work with us and to assist us, whether it be through additional funding or whether it be through additional programming in addressing this issue. It is one of appearance, and we all want our city to look good every day, not just when we have an event going on or when we have certain people in town. We want it to look good for the people that live here regardless of where that is. And so we'll continue to highlight not only our public works professionals, but to try to look for more efficient ways for government to be responsive to the needs of our residents that relates to the basic things of keeping the city clean. Now I want to give a quick update on the homeless task force. Our task force is meant to address homelessness on May the 5th, continuing our discussion on how to serve and help those experiencing homelessness in our city. We've identified some tangible ideas and solutions to try to meet some of these end goals, some which may include but are not limited to finding ways to provide people experiencing homelessness with IDs as identification remains a central issue, finding ways to prevent homeless persons' items from being stolen, providing robust passes to those experiencing homelessness, strengthening our ability to serve youth and college students who also are experiencing homelessness, and providing more clothes and basic hygiene items as service providers run out and lack funding to fill that gap. And of course, we want to explore transitional housing, rehousing, and other permanent housing efforts. Our Office of Community Development, which is a part of the Department of Economic Development, headed up by Desmond Wilson, is working tirelessly to address these subjects. So as they do work towards garnering better data, this will strengthen our ability to advocate for those experiencing homelessness over the next few months. We have set a goal to have a strategic plan by the end of the year, but would like to see some tangible, immediate solutions come to fruition through critical... through critical discussions, funding, policies, and community engagement. And so make no mistake, this is high on our priority list. This is something that we're engaged in and we realize we don't have all the answers to. So we are soliciting the help of those providers here in our community to give us their ideas and to give us their thoughts about what we can do. Just this week, I was asked to join a call about homelessness in cities with the National League of Cities because cities are seeing this across the country. Whether some are dealing with tent homeless encampments, where you have almost tent cities set up and people in sleeping bags all congregated in one area. Others are dealing with it spread out and beyond. And so we're trying to understand what things that we can do legally, what things we can do through the community, and how we can address these issues regardless of the size of the city or regardless of the size of the homeless population. So we will continue to work with our task force, and we will continue to give you updates. And we ask for your involvement and your thoughts as well as you come about ideas that you may have that we can share with the task force also. Finally, I'll just give just a very quick summation of what I was going to talk to a little bit, but I'll just give a summation of a resolution that we hope will be presented later on. And that has been the joint committee between the City Council and the County Commission, as well as the mayor's office, to work with our stakeholders at the county to really invest this first round of American Rescue Plan Act money that has come from the Biden administration. As you can see, $5 million we've allocated to mental health, which we hope will complete the crisis center, which just had a ribbon cutting this week. $5 million to Small Business and Entrepreneurship Program, which we believe is very important to those businesses, in particular black-owned businesses who run into steady obstacles and hurdles to getting access to capital and who have failed to get on solid footing here in the city of Montgomery. $5 million to neighborhood revitalization. Many of those coming from your comments through your city councilmen and women and other elected officials about things that you would like to see. $1 million to homeless services, part of which we just touched on in the previous subject. $6 million to water and sewer. $2 million to COVID-19 response and mitigation. Also, public health should be a part of that piece. And $1.5 million to police body cameras. That is not all. There's additional funding, both going to public safety efforts that we have recommended and also community development efforts that we want to make sure that we have as well. And this is just part of the first round of money that was allocated by the administration and working with our colleagues at the County Commission. I think it's been a great process that the City Council has been very adept at giving feedback and being involved in taking some public comments and incorporating that into this whole plan. And if it is taken up tonight and hopefully approved, the entire plan will be released for public consumption for what we'll do in the first round. It's also important to understand that this is not everything that we will get. There will be a second round of money that will come from the federal government, both to the state and local levels. So things that we may not have been able to cover in this first round, we hope that if it's a priority, and we hope if it's important, that the governing bodies of the city and county can come together to include in the second round of funding. So with that said, Mr. President, that concludes the mayor's message, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Very good, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Calhoun.
With that slide being up, I know we have a resolution that I want to bring up from the floor to allocate the American Rescue Plan Act funds that I passed out to the council. We'd be pleased if we take that right now.
Be fine.
Okay with the council. Everyone has a copy. We have any questions?
I do. On the second page on F, it says 2.92 million to conduct a comprehensive category review of waste disposal issues. What does that mean? We gonna allocate 2.29, 92 million dollars to do a study? Is this what we're saying?
Okay, if we go back to where it is, where the third paragraph highlights the six items that we're talking about. Okay, and I think what we're talking about when we come with the study, when we talk about water and sewer, people in the wetlands, we have to do a study to allocate these funds to say, hey, this is the right way and the way the federal government is going to support. And I asked us to pay these funds back. It's what our lobbyist is telling us that we need to use. Up to the 292, well, 2.9 million dollars to do that. And I know everybody thinks we can just go out. I understand your question, Mr. Graham. I'm not just piggyback. People think we can just go out and do it when we have the fund. But we have to know the right way to allocate these funds. We just can't go out and say, well, company X is going to go out and do this, and it's not the right thing to do, and then we spend the money and then we kind of waste the funds on that. That's what that study is about, what I got from Levitate and from our legal staff and our finance director.
Okay, I thought that's what Levitate was doing though also. You're making sure we were under the guidance.
I have one more question about that 2.9 million.
Yeah.
It's waste disposal. Is that recycling?
No.
Is that sewer?
That's water and sewer.
Okay.
Waste disposal, not the recycling.
And we're going 2.43 million for mental health. And I thought I just saw 5 million.
Montgomery Mental Health. It's up to 2.5. You know, we're splitting it from the county.
Okay.
So when it says $6 million on the slide that we just had the mayor presented, this is our half of the 6 million and this is our half of the 5 million for mental health. So that's kind of what you're saying, CC?
Let me just go back here where it says, "Whereas a joint public meeting of the city and county on April 25th, a quorum each body set a collective project, phase one of the Thrive Program, which included the following." We all agreed on those six items.
Yeah, we all discussed those six items, right.
Okay, well, in government majority, right. We discussed them. We agreed. And you know, we talked about what we was going to do. And it's kind of like, you know, people think we're making progress, but we're running in place. We got the trust. In my opinion, we have to trust each other, the things that we talked about that's going to be implemented at the county and the city for our citizens of Montgomery. We can question any item on this item, you know, because we're not all going to get what we want. But we tried to come together, ask the city and the county to do what we thought was best with these funds that was passed down from the federal government. We got them. The city, the county, the citizen are asked what we're going to do. This is a resolution. Anything that comes back has to come back before this council to be approved. It has to come. It's just not saying we can go out and just spend the money without coming back for this council for approval.
CC, I got a question. Has the county already approved all six?
I didn't. I don't see a county. I saw Mr...
He over there.
I don't know. Did they have a meeting? I didn't follow them today.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, y'all. Y'all approve this? Thank you.
What'd he say?
What'd he say?
He said...
Can you come up, Isaiah?
Let me say this as Mr. Saint...
I'm just curious, did y'all vote on this this morning, yes or no?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. President, do you want me to respond to?
Yes, did y'all vote on this this morning?
No, no, we did not. All we did was vote on the, our portion of the money for the Crisis the Virgin Center and for the body cams. We didn't have this extensive list this morning.
But you voted on two of those items off this...
We voted on two of the items that you all are considering tonight.
Yes.
What two items? The body cams and what?
Body cams and the Crisis the Virgin Center.
So those items did have to come before you guys for approval on those two items.
Those two items, but that is...
That's the same thing I'm saying. That these items, we're saying all six is what we agreed on.
Yeah, and I think maybe...
And then we'll vote on them individual as they come up.
Yes, and some of the confusion is the fact that we pooled our resources and was supposed to be a joint venture between the city and the county, and you all are considering an extensive list, and we only considered two items. So maybe that's where some of the questions come in at. And I don't know if the entire county commission agrees on that list that you all have. I am personally concerned, since you asked me to come up here, about spending $6 million on a study for water and sewer. And I think we already know what the needs are as it relates to water and sewer.
And I can agree with your concerns, but like you say, those two items came back before the county commission.
Yes.
And you voted on them. Because like these six items that we're talking about, they would have to come back before the county, I mean, the city council to be voting on.
Yes.
That's all I'm explaining to my family.
It was preliminary. The RFPs and all the things that are required to meet the treasury guidelines has to be put into a packet, and we'll come back and do a final vote on those items. Those two items were just items that we passed today just to give Levitate the authority to come back with a thorough report and making sure that the expenditures of those funds meet treasury guidelines.
Thank you, sir. That's the only thing I was explaining.
Okay.
I think in the spirit of partnership, we vote on A and C and stay with the county.
Let me, can I tie in a little bit?
Yeah.
We've had the money for six months.
Right.
We've been meeting. I think we've had some very productive meetings. I thought the last meeting in particular was very productive in going over the draft that they gave us. I don't think that anyone plans to spend $6 million on a study. It says up to. So what we understand is that before we can get any community what they need, we have to have studies done, and it basically has to be shovel-ready. And so if we are talking about the various communities around, whether it be the North Montgomery or West Montgomery, even parts of South Montgomery, and as I was reminded, there are parts of East Montgomery that don't have access to sewer, which was very helpful for me to know. Then there are... This provides us the opportunity to start moving on this. And I think that, you know, I don't know if there are any surprises in here. I don't know if people didn't read the draft, but this is what has been out there for at least over a month. And so, you know, in our prior meetings, I would have thought that if there was any question about us being able to implement this before the second round of funding was released to the state and the city, those questions may have been brought up then for us maybe to have a joint meeting if need be. But let me just say, you know, from my vantage point, I think there's flexibility in this resolution that Pro Tim is bringing up. I don't think it overly commits the city to anything that it does not want to do. It does not feel the need to do. What it does allow us to do is to put these resources to work right now before our second phase of federal dollars come in. And I think that, you know, all of us have done a good job in expressing some of those priorities. But I also think that, you know, you can't sit on it forever. That the goal of the American Rescue Plan Act was to get people to work and to get the money into the communities to fix some of the issues that were caused because of the issues surrounding COVID-19. That's where this comes from, and I think that we've had some very productive meetings with that.
And I don't have a problem with any of these, Mayor. I do have a problem with the county didn't vote on the same thing that we're voting on, and we're supposed to be having quota partnership.
I agree.
That's what's concerning to me, that we're going to pool our money. We all agree on whatever, but the county only voted on two things this morning, for whatever reason, I don't know.
Ms. Brew, and I respect that. Don't know what the issues were with the county. I was not made aware of those whatsoever. But I do believe that our partnership is in good faith with the county. And I have not heard anything to persuade me that it's not. And, you know, there may be some questions there. And if our mayor of the county, I would say the same thing to the county commission that I'm saying here, but I'm not. So I think, you know, for us, the city should, in my opinion, move forward with resolutions so that we can get this money into the community and we can get these programs off the ground. And again, it doesn't bind us to, I'm not going to spend $6 million tomorrow. The check's not going out tomorrow for that amount of money. It allows us to start.
But Mayor, we got to have an ordinance to spend the money. This is strictly a resolution. A confusion I think the council's getting, and we've got allocations here of 2.43 million for mental health, and we just saw 5 million, okay?
That's our half.
That number doesn't add up, huh?
Yeah, I guess that's our half.
I assume that's our half, but what we just saw was $25 million. That's our half of what's, I think, what's 23 million now?
Yeah, the 5 million is everybody. Is city...
Okay, but 2.43 would be an odd number when you're talking about 5 million. I would say 2.5 split evenly would be the, I guess maybe we're splitting 60, 50?
60.
Is it an odd number? We're doing 50, 48, and they doing 52 or something like that? Is that what the number is? Is that correct? No, they're getting more money than we're getting.
Yes, it's based on the percentage of funds that the city got versus the county.
Okay, so that breaks it back to...
That breaks it back down.
2.43, okay. I got you. All right.
Stay up there. All right, any more questions?
I'm good.
All right. Well, I'll move to suspend the rules.
Have both suspend rules. If I raise your hand.
Are we going to amend it or anything?
Right now, we don't have a suspension of rules.
I'm going to carry it over for two weeks.
Ms. Brew, let me address that question before you carry it over. And I want to address that. When we look at the six items in paragraph number three, the county chose to say, well, we're going to go ahead and start with these two items that he came up and spoke about. Any item that comes back before, has to come back before this council. We can say we picked two items that they didn't pick. So now we're going to be playing chess match, checker match, where we're going to match up on our agreement to do this.
No, it's not chess and checker. That's...
Okay, so if we want to pass the blighted property buyback program tonight and the comprehensive country ride review of waste disposal, they pass two, we pass two. That's four out of the six. We're just saying, hey, it has to come back. We got to trust our administrators and people that comes before us that we're going to do the right thing that we agreed on. Like I said earlier, we'll talk about making progress, but sometimes we're just running in place because we don't trust each other. We got to show leadership. I don't care really what the county does. We get 100% of the calls that goes on in Montgomery County, the state of Alabama, about what goes on. It comes to this city government. We have to take leadership, ask the leadership, to go forward and do what we know. We discussed these things on April 25th in a joint meeting that was publicized. So now we're going to come back and want to hold these things up because what the county did? I just don't agree when we follow the county. We partnership with what's best for the citizens of Montgomery County. We have to work together with these funds that we have coming down, or we just keep running in place.
CC, I was at the meeting with the county, and there were three things we came away from. I think that's where some of us cut off, is the crisis intervention, the body cams and the sewer. That was the three things that all, everybody in the room agreed on that day.
I think Mr. Mitch had talked about blight, and Ms. Marsha had talked about blight. That was an item.
But that was talking about getting some grants for blights. But we all talked about the ARPA money, those three items.
It's the will of the council what we do, but we carried over. We'd be at the same point. If we come back and say we want to pass two and six, then we pass two and six. The county passed what they wanted to pass. We came together as a partner. It do say jointly allocated office one. So we're going to pick and choose on our half, and they do what they do on our half? So all the time and the money that we have spaced over this consulting period, we just spend it in the wind.
If we do that, that defeats the whole purpose of us doing that as a joint initiative in the first place. That's why we wanted, and that's why we all chose to do that, was to move forward because 80%, not 90% of the citizens in this county live within city limits. So when Chairman Dean and I first talked about it, we was saying, let's do it together. And we talked to the leadership of the council with President Genright and Pro Tim Calhoun. And he talked to Vice Chairman Singleton over the county. So the whole point was to have this time to flush out ideas and questions and really to bring in a third party to work with our finance departments, our legal departments that are already doing a lot of work to kind of guide us on the laws and how we could implement these funds in a time-sensitive way. I mean, I think, you know, in my opinion, you know, I wanted this out in the first quarter of this year. But we're here. We're in May. But not to adopt it now puts us, you know, in sometime in June when we would have already received a second round from the federal government by then. And again, I don't think that we should get too, you know, get too, have too much anxiety... get too, you know, get too, have too much anxiety about what the county did and what we are going to do when we have sat in joint meetings and agreed to this overall document that's been prepared and been shared with all of us.
I think, I think one thing, Mayor, in here, and this, it says, shall take the necessary steps to analyze and utilize ARPA funds in our available funding sources to implement FOMR programs. So this is to take the next step. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We need to take the next step.
Let me be clear. I know we've talked about different issues, but for me is what I started with when I first asked the question. When we had that meeting, that's not my takeaway, that we were just gonna do a study and that was it. We was gonna commit $6 million to do a study. That was not my takeaway from that meeting. Uh, if I misunderstood, then, you know, it was my fault. I should have had more conversation if that's the case, but that was not my takeaway from that meeting. Um, so I, you know, that's where my reserve is with this. It's not about what the county did, what the county didn't do and all of that. And I know that is an issue. If they didn't feel comfortable with the takeaway and vote on all three, that is, all six, that is something. But for me, that was not what we talked about as a whole, just doing, putting $6 million to just do a review of wastewater disposal issues. That was, that was not what I understood.
All right. I got most on the floor to suspend rules on, if I raise your hand.
Three.
Oppose.
That you don't get unanimous. It has to be unanimous. So it's carried over.
So Mr. Question, before we go, before we go forward, I know we didn't suspend.
We've got, we've got some more people that we've got to hear.
On this item?
No, on Carriage Hill Neighborhood Association.
I'm sorry, I, I.
Okay, but let me ask my question, Mr. President, before we go forward. What, what's gonna change in two weeks?
Hopefully I have a little more understanding.
But what's gonna change about this document in two weeks? We gonna bring a new document in two weeks?
I hope so.
No, we're not. We, this is the same document. We didn't suspend the rules on, so what's gonna change? That's all.
How, how do you know that?
I'm just trying to figure out why, why is it you the final side and we can't change that?
That's my question.
It's over. Next item.
Don't ask it. You don't want to answer.
Well, I got to answer.
Well, you ain't get, you ain't give me a chance to tell you one. I would have gave you one.
There's nothing's gonna change.
Go ahead and tell me, Ms. Graham.
Well, I mean, why can't we get somebody to change this ordinance? Why can't legal work for the full of the council and just one person on the council?
My thing is, we seem to agree on some items that you guys always attend to meetings, then always when we come up to bring something.
No, but I was in that meeting where we talked about that.
You was in the meeting.
I was in this meeting, but we didn't say we was gonna spend $6 million to do a study.
I'm moving on. I'm moving on. I'm moving on. So we don't get the warning, so in your area.
You know that ain't me. You know that ain't me. I'm sorry.
Enough, enough, enough.
That is not order.
Mr. Pruitt, you've got guests in the house tonight?
I apologize.
Mr. Pruitt?
Hey, yes. Carl and the people from Carriage Hills. Mr. Genright, we had an opportunity to take dinner to, come on, Carl, to, uh, South Central last night and feed the shift change, and they wanted to bring a card today. Chief Albert, if you come up, they just want to present a card to you guys for, for MPD, for, for your work and appreciation. And I'll let Carl talk.
Yes, I don't know whether to face the council or face the, face the council. Okay. All right, um.
Serena, y'all come up.
My name is, um, I'll wait till everybody gets up. My name is, uh, Carl Strather, and I would like to take this opportunity on behalf of the, uh, Carriage Hills Neighborhood Association to, first of all, welcome Chief Darryl Albert, Albert to the city of Montgomery. Welcome. And we would, uh, like to thank the organizers of this event for allowing us to recognize the, uh, Montgomery Police Department. We would like to thank the mayor and all those associated, and Glenn Pruitt for facilitating these efforts to help our neighborhood. The Carriage Hills Neighborhood Association has worked in conjunction with the Montgomery Police Department in our neighborhood meetings. Each month except November and December, we have active meetings involving Montgomery Police Department. Yesterday, we provided an evening dinner for the South Central Division precinct, thanks to Glenn Pruitt and Chick-fil-A. Recently, and most important, our city councilman Glenn Pruitt and Montgomery, uh, Police Department and the Carriage Hills Neighborhood Association have facilitated to, uh, security-related projects such as, number one, increasing police presence by off-duty officers and patrols in some of the adjacent apartment complexes, uh, next to Carriage Hills to decrease unwanted and disruptive loitering and various other unwanted and desirable activities. Also, we have potentially dangerous activities such as weapons being discharged on one of the streets in our very neighborhood, and we increased the police presence through our city councilman, helping us to obtain the participation of off-duty officers to eliminate this unwanted and dangerous activity. Presently, we have engaged and are presently engaging in another effort to decrease unwanted behavior, such as breaking into vehicles and residences by increasing the Montgomery Police Department presence. Our number one emphasis and encouragement to our neighborhood residents is that if you see something, say something. Once again, we would like to present this card to Chief Albert and the, uh, Montgomery PD. And once again, we would like to show our appreciation for all that you do for our neighborhood, for our city. And once again, you know, in order to have a safe city, we have to have safe neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
They gonna come up and take a picture with us?
You wanna do one up here?
Yeah.
Hey, chief.
Take one up here.
Yeah, come on, man.
He had two sandwiches in his hand. Thank you.
What do you share?
Hey, I moved over to you.
Three, two, one.
Good job. Good job. I'd like to call on C.C. Jack Owens to make a leadership Montgomery team award presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Genright, Your Honor, council members. My name's Jack Owen. I have the honor of serving as president of the Montgomery County Historical Society and Family Research Center. Uh, in a nutshell, the mission of Montgomery County Historical Society is the preservation of the history of Montgomery County in all of its manifestations. And one of those has to do with the county cemeteries. Cemeteries are repositories of much information of historical significance, both personally and to the public. The challenge is how to record the information contained in these cemeteries and how to make it available to others for personal use or, or research, uh, purposes. Some years ago, the Historical Society embarked on what we call the Oakwood Cemetery Project, the purpose of which was to map and record information contained on the grave markers at Oakwood Cemetery. You can imagine that was a monumental task. That went on for some years, and then about a year ago, with the aid of the city of Montgomery, and in particular, Richard Bailey and Nita Jackson and many others, uh, we took a significant step forward by way of the introduction of an app for geographic information systems, which is in, uh, short form, the computer trapping, tracking and mapping technology to take the information that's recorded, reduce it to a digital format and make it available to the public. And we do that through the Historical Society. And one of the beauties of, of the application that was, uh, created through, uh, Nita Jackson and others' efforts is that this technology was applicable to any other cemeteries that might want to take advantage of it for the same purpose. Collect the information, compile it, record it, make it available. Enter Leadership Montgomery Legacy Class 38 Team Six. Uh, this group of individuals, and I'll name them, and if you don't mind, I'll ask them to stand. Some of them are in the, the back of the auditorium. Chairman is Brandy Jeffries. Members are Agnes Lover, Cherry Gamble, Greg Glenn, Louis Stargel, Michael Barrigan, Behringer, and Steve Webb. They accomplished the first adaptation of this GIS mapping system to another cemetery. And they chose the Remount Cemetery, which is located at Chestnut Street and Harrison Road, right near Lincoln Road. And they began this computer mapping project on January the 23rd of this year, and they finished it in two months, collected all that information, and their work is now available. And we want to thank Mayor Reed and the councilman for the time to acknowledge these individuals publicly. We will present them with a certificate of appreciation from the Montgomery County Historical Society, as well as one to Richard Bailey and Ms. Jackson. We appreciate you giving us this time to do that.
Okay. Any special committee report? Okay. First item?
Mr. President, item one, application for restaurant retail liquor license doing business as Yellow Hammer Bistro at 7725 Everetta Drive.
Mr. Albert, you here?
I understand they got everything set up and he's made a payment and?
Yes, he's set up a payment agreement last week and made the first payment.
That's awesome.
Very good.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
And most adopt, on, if I raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Hey, thank you for being patient. I appreciate it.
Item number two?
Ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances, Chapter One, Section One dash two, definitions and rules of construction in Chapter 16, Section 16105, license tax classification to provide for event centers with and without liquor license.
Mr. President, move for approval.
On, if I raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution, ordinance is adopted. Item three, resolution revoking the business license for failure to pay sales tax and authorizing a show cost hearing for Can a Brother Get a Slice at 1935 Mulberry Street?
Representative Can a Brother Get a Slice here? I don't think he's here tonight.
He did come in yesterday, signed a payment agreement.
He did?
He did sign a payment agreement. He's supposed to make the first payment by Friday.
Okay, good deal.
Okay.
Please, he signed the agreement and he's gonna pay, pay your money by Friday?
He's supposed to pay by Friday.
If he doesn't, we'll pass it and then if, if he, uh, if he doesn't do it, the mayor can veto.
Okay, we'll do that.
Make sure the mayor knows if he didn't show up.
Will do.
Get most of it approved.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
On, if I raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item four, resolution revoking the business license for failure to pay sales tax and authorizing a show cost hearing doing business as Bayou Turkey Food Truck.
This guy do anything?
Have not heard from him.
We'll pass this to.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt.
On, if I raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item five, review of Strathmore Apartments at 4220 Strathmore Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Angie Ingram. I'm an attorney here representing Strathmore Park Apartments. And I have multiple representatives here, regional manager, Joe Beasley, um, assistant manager, I'm sorry, Ashley Gordon, and I'm the maintenance supervisor. I'm sorry, Tony, sorry.
So let me ask you a question. I have been getting a lot of, um, complaints when it comes to work orders at the apartment complex. If you can just kind of tell me, you know, how do that process work? Um, generally, um, how long do those repairs take, take place? Because those are the most calls that I receive from, um, Strathmore. So if you can explain it, because I want to make sure when they call me, um, I'm giving them the right, correct information.
Okay. Uh, it may be better if he addresses that. Would you like to talk about that?
Now, the majority of them.
State your name for me, please.
Tony Roundtree. The majority of them, we take care of immediately. Now, there are several that, you know, have legitimate complaints, but the majority of them, we take care of immediately. Now, they've got comfortable just, instead of, a lot of them don't even come to the office. You know, they'll know someone that has called the city, and that's what they'll advise their brother, sister, cousin, friend. Oh, we'll just call the city. And see, that's what a lot of them have got comfortable doing. But, but, you know, the majority of them, like especially like leaks and ACs or whatever, we take care of immediately. And if we don't take care of it immediately, it's because we don't have the part, but then when the part comes in, it's taken care of.
So is it a, a form that they will fill out or do they just call the front office? Because I know, I tried to call the front office. I think the telephone number, I could not get through. So is it a, a form that they will fill out? Do they just call the front office? What is the process?
They can either call the front office or just come to the front office.
Do we have somebody on there speaking on number five?
Yes.
Yes, uh, Ms. Angie Ingram, if you're in the council chamber, please come forward. Angie Ingram.
Anybody sign up for number five? What's her name again? Oh, that was you? Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
There is a resident online portal that they can utilize to put in work orders.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure, um, because I've been getting a lot of calls. Um, I do, you know, first thing I ask them to do, to call the front office. Um, some has reported that they do call 311. Um, when they call 311, it gives me the opportunity also to see those, um, work orders. Um, Mr. Tate is very good in, um, of coming out and, and making me aware of those situations. So when they call, I'll be able to tell them the correct process to take when it comes to work order. And that been the biggest complaint. I think when we did this, maybe a couple of months ago, we was doing more of, uh, public safety, uh, but I'm still getting some of those calls, and I try my best to work with the property manager. So I will get your number. If you can give it to Ms. Blaylock before you leave, so I can be able to get in contact with you, uh, about those complaints.
We're happy to do that. And if you have any questions for me, um, I'm here to respond as well.
Okay, just leave your card and I'll make sure I get. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, yes.
Thank y'all.
Okay.
Um, you know, I'm having an issue with Sherwood, and I've been sending Mr. Hodge out there. Is it Mr. Tate I need to ask to go out there and see him? Is that the power?
Well, well, I just, he explained every, you know, Mr. Tate and, um, Mr. Carr kind of explained everything to me when it comes to those apartment complexes. Uh, myself and Mr. Tate been working, um, we've been working on these apartment complexes since he stepped in the door. So that's just my, my person that I call and say, or when I see him, I talk to him about these apartment complexes. So all of them, I mean, you can.
Do I, do I get Mr. Hodge and he, uh, will he do the same thing, Mr. Tate? Because Sherwood is on the radar really bad.
Good, good evening, everybody. Uh, the best way to handle this, because I know there's a big demand, uh, of, of a big concern all over the city. And so we do get a lot of calls from a lot of people. We would prefer you call 311. That's the preferred way because that's where the records are kept, as, uh, Councilman Mitchell was saying. However, we do make allowances for a call direct to our agency. And once you get to our department, usually it's Mr. Hodge that you would contact. However, we don't limit that to the council persons, quite frankly. So if you call me, either way, it gets to Mr. Hodge and that's where the rubber hits the road. So, uh, but I do follow up in terms of, uh, the action that's required.
Mr. Tate?
And we did tell them to 311 out in Sherwood, because I had 10 people. They called and said it was 10 different apartments that had complained. They wanted to give me all 10. When I talked to Mr. Hodge, he said we needed to have a paper trail, so they all needed to 311. So we did do that, but.
Yeah, I understand sometimes there's an urgency or there's pressure depending, but we would prefer the 311. But however, feel free to let Mr. Hodge know, or me, either way, we're working together on this.
So, Mr. Tate, so the apartment complex, um, can actually know, what is the process when I have? When I have, when there's a tenant that calls 311, that, tell us how it works, so they can explain it. I know he said that they call 311 instead of letting them know. What do the city do when it come out for those 311s? And do you guys actually talk to the management, who do you speak to once you?
Well, when 311 gets the call, or the complaint, they will disperse that particular complaint to us. There's internal communication that happens, and we have electronic records of how all of this is taking place. Once the information comes to us, what will happen is, we'll review the information, and there will be contact made. Normally, we go directly to the property management people, because that complaint starts with them, and we like to initiate it with them. And then from there, if we have to do further inspections based on the information we gather, we go from there.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Item number six.
Review of Beaumont Reserve at Eastern at 5800 Eagle Circle.
Mr. Dumas and Mrs. Duffy.
Councilwoman, councilman, mayor. Thank you for having us today, I'm Royal Dumas, I'm a lawyer at Rushton Stakely. I'm here for any questions you have, but I really have Mr. Duffy, who's come here today. He's the managing member of the company that owns Beaumont Reserve, and wants to give you an update on the improvements that are being made out of that apartment complex.
Good evening, council members, it's an honor to be here this evening. My name is Patrick Duffy, I'm one of the managing members of TMFM2 LLC. We're the owner of Beaumont Reserve at Eastern Apartment Homes. And I'm here to represent today that we've spent about $4.2 million in renovating this asset and making light updates and cosmetic upgrades across the property. We're about 80% done with our project, but we are here today to request a business license in order to complete the remainder of our project and turn on electricity to our units. And I'm here to, and happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Pruitt?
So can we see, is this the only, do you have any pictures of?
Yes, can we move forward in the slide, please? This is an aerial. You can go forward. This was the exterior before. This is what the exterior looks like today. This was a kitchen before. This is what our kitchens look like today. This was the clubhouse and leasing office before. This is what this space looks like today for our residents. And we've also been active in engaging with MPD and Buford Security in order to maintain a secure site. And we've invested quite a bit in updated fencing and security perimeters for the asset as well.
How many, how many, how many total apartments are there?
Sir, there's 392 units at the property, and we're running, or updating or performing work in about 185 of those units.
How many people you think are occupying units?
Today, sir, we have approximately 150 residents on site, because many of the units were in a down position that we needed to bring them up to a livable state. And right now, we just need a business license to turn on electricity and, and make those units livable.
So y'all bought these when they were in the down state?
Correct, at the, at the time of purchase in January of 2021, 128 units were completely vacant.
And I know that this is a, a long-term project. What is your projected timeframe that you think you may be done with the, the entire?
Yes, sir, all of our unit renovations will be done by August of this year, and we anticipate being substantially occupied by the end of the year.
Mr. Tate, I know you have been working with them, I know you laid out a plan for them. Are they on target, or they're moving in the direction that would be positive for the city of Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this, this is one of the first times since I've been on board with the city, and hearing the council's interest in these types of projects, where the interests of the council and the interests of the property owner have come together, and they have worked with us, and we've worked with them, and we have a good understanding of where they're going, and we have no problems at this point.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
You good? Motion to suspend rules?
You gotta read number seven.
Oh, number seven?
Seven is the resolution approving the issuance of a business license for Beaumont Reserve at Eastern 5800 Eagle Circle.
Need a motion to suspend rules?
Motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Are we doing six and seven?
Unanimous. Six was just the, the, seven, we're on seven now, which is the resolution to give them the business license.
Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item eight, resolution placing a 60-day moratorium on new applications for event and our entertainment venues and currently licensed event and our entertainment venues to close at 12:00 a.m.
Mr. Mitchell?
Do we have anybody? So, so what we, what we did, we looked at the number of entertainment venues or entertainment centers that was coming in the city of Montgomery, and we wanted to kind of look at it and see what we can do differently. I think we are seeing so many so rapidly in the city of Montgomery, so I'm asking the council that we do a 60-day moratorium, also imposing a 12 p.m., I mean, 12 a.m. closing time for those current event centers.
Any discussion?
I'm good.
I ain't good with it. Hey, Mr. Mitchell, and I understand what we're trying to do, and I know we did this a couple of months ago, and then we had to come back and revamp it.
Yes, sir.
Would you be willing to carry this over and have some discussion about that with the ones that's currently? And how would that affect their business based on what they already have on the books? And then, you know, I'm, I'm all favor of moratorium moving forward, but if I have already booked the event, and I already set the hours, and then I come back and have to change it, how would they affect it?
So, so, so when are we, when are we talking about this going into effect, immediately?
I guess soon as the mayor signs it. So I want to have that discussion, so we don't pass something, and then we come back, and then we want to revamp it. Because if you're, just what I'm thinking, if you're an entertainment venue, and you have already booked something out, say through the 4th of July, and you, you came in and say, I want to be open for these hours, now do I have to go back and revamp the contract, do I stand a chance of losing it? Now, I understand new business, if we want to put it, but I don't know if we could do that legally, to set different times on that. So I want to discuss that before we go forward and just say, hey, 12 a.m. is the closing time, because I don't know what your contracts are already on the books.
Ms. Blaylock, are we able to make a amendment on this resolution?
If you, you'll have to suspend the rules before you can make a motion.
Now, we can, we can either move it up to...
Let, let's discuss.
We're going, we'll carry it over, we'll let the council.
We'll let it sponsor, we'll carry it over, thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
You're welcome.
Item nine, resolution changing the times of the August 2nd, 2022 council meeting and work session. Work session will be at 3 o'clock, and the council meeting will be at 4 o'clock.
Mr. Pruitt? Need a motion for Mr. Mitchell to rule?
Move the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
You gonna let me ask for it first? Mr. Pruitt, motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Thank you, sir. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Pruitt.
Yes.
Item 10, resolution declaring compliance and no further action required for Martin's Restaurant at 1796 Carter Hill Road.
Yes, sir.
Martin says, satisfied, everything, the account is current.
Account is current.
Yes.
Need a motion to suspend rules? On item number 10?
Move the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 11, application for retail beer and retail table one off premises only doing business as Circle K at 10231 Chantilly Parkway.
All right, need representative for item number 11? Item number 11?
For Murphy USA?
Say that again, ma'am.
Murphy USA?
No, this is, this is for Circle K. That's the next one.
All right, no one here to represent item number 11? We'll carry it over.
Okay, item 12, application for retail table one off premises only doing business as Murphy USA at 10620 Chantilly Parkway.
All right, this is a public hearing. You represent Murphy? This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item or your favorite item, please come forward.
I need your name for the record.
Jessica Simpson.
Speaking to the mic, please.
Jessica Simpson.
Jessica Simpson?
Uh huh.
Okay, famous name. All right, public hearing, plan the public hearing is held, it's proper before the council.
Move the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, man, sell plenty of gas.
Thank you.
Item 13, application for retail beer and retail table one off premises only doing business as Family Dollar Store at 3485 Woodley Road.
This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak in favor of this item or against this item, please come forward. Your name for the record, sir.
Good evening, council members, Dan Wagle on behalf of Family Dollar.
Any questions? This kind of public hearing is over, proper before the council. Mr. Mitchell?
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, you have.
Item 16, application for retail beer and retail table one off premises only doing business as Family Dollar Store at 3100 Day Street.
She said, item 14, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Move to suspend the rules?
We have a public hearing.
Anyone like to speak against this item or for this item, please come forward. Go ahead, sir.
Dan Wagle again on behalf of Family Dollar.
Ms. Graham?
Move to suspend the rules?
Oh, I declared a public hearing, it's over. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council members.
All in favor, you guys vote first.
Unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution is adopted. Item 15, application for special retail more than 30 days liquor license doing business as ALO at 2596 Eastern Boulevard.
All right, representative for ALO, please come forward, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of this item or against this item, please come forward at this time. Declared a public hearing is over, it's proper.
I need their name for the record.
Marlo Pickett.
Joseph Jones.
All right.
And y'all are both representing that. Okay.
All right, it's proper, declared a public hearing is over, it's proper before the council.
Move to suspend the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, good luck with your business, sir.
Got one more right behind me.
Item 16, application for special retail more than 30 days liquor license doing business as ALO at 149 Eastern Boulevard.
All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak for this item or against this item, please come forward. Send a name for, well, you got his name.
Yes, sir, same people before.
Mission, move to suspend the rules?
All right, public hearing is over, need a motion?
Suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Thank you.
Item 17, pursuant to Section 1153b1 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed locations.
Anyone in the audience got an issue with item number 17, please come forward, item number 17.
I come to speak to you about Lucy Street 624.
Ma'am, excuse me, your name for the record?
Alice U, A-L-S-C-E, last name Y-U.
You get that, Ms. Blaylock?
Yes, sir, and it's which street?
Lucy Street 624.
Okay, what's your issues?
Issue is that, like today, this meeting, I did not know anything about it until we looked online and seen the address was up there for a tear down. I do not receive any messages or anything from the city stating that they was going to tear my home down. And I was going to plan to make that house an Airbnb, because they're going to put the water park right there, and that'd be great Airbnb for this property. So I want to know, why was my house on demolition? And then, the last paper I got from you guys was saying that it was trash and debris and overgrown grass. And I went out and took a picture of it that day, so I could have it when I need it. But it was not trash and overgrown grass at that house. And my neighbor's tree is right here, and they're telling me to cut, the neighbor's tree is always in my driveway, is this way. This isn't my driveway, the neighbor tree is here, he has a lot. But his trees are growing over into my driveway, I can't go over there and cut somebody else's things.
Mr. Carr, you, you got something you want to share with this, on this item?
Ma'am, do you actually have a deed to the property, you own the property by, by, by simple deed? Or do you just have a tax interest in it?
This is, this is where I...
My notes when I reviewed the case stated that...
This is what happened, the last time I let you guys look at my stuff, you laughed at me and made jokes at me, but I let them see it.
My notes state that the house is already partially collapsed, she purchased it at a tax sale.
I got pictures.
Have you had any contact from her?
Hold up, ma'am, talk to us, talk to us, he's talking to us, you just talk to us, we're going to make the decision on it. Do we have any pictures of this property?
Should be some of your file.
Not on 17.
Ms. Brenda, we just got one page 17, right, or did I lose something?
Yeah, we just have the item that's listed for demolition, we don't have the total package.
They're online for y'all to go to look at.
Online.
Online.
There you go.
Do you want us to start putting, see, they're so thick, do you want us to start putting them back in the packet?
I mean, if they're on, on the screen right here, we can check it out.
Mike, Mike can pull it up?
I, no, I don't think he has access to it, this is just strictly for the council and, and the mayor and some of the department heads to look at, it's secure.
The one, the one I just let you read, this is copy.
She say she's talking about 638.
Well, once, once again, there's only a tax interest that she purchased at a tax sale. She has no deed to the property, so it would be difficult to do any financing to repair the property.
Ma'am, I'm just going to speak, I'm speaking on my, Ms. Oles?
Ms. U.
Ms. U.
Y-U, Ms. U.
Ms. U.
Yes, sir.
She's purchased several properties from the tax sales, several of them are dilapidated, and they're in the same condition. This one has collapsed in her area.
Ms. U, what's your plans for the property? Because what, what we're faced with in the city of Montgomery is we're blind. And I understand purchasing these properties, but the community and the neighbors are complaining about these properties. That's why the inspectors go out there and inspect these properties, and we come up on the demolition list. So, you know, we understand if you got a plan to re, renovate these properties, and you can do it in a timely manner, we don't have a problem, but just to purchase the property to sit there for three or four years, that's what the community is faced with, and we're faced with at a perilous, we try to fix.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we go ahead and vote on this, and just let her get with Mr.?
See the pictures?
Well, and let her get with Mr. Carr, if they can work something out like we normally do. Ain't nothing to work out with?
It's not going to work out, they're going to do it like this, they're like someone.
How long have you had this property? How long have you had this property?
I, I can't remember, but all the paperwork is right here.
Has it been multiple years, or this is this year?
I bought it by, this is, this, this is it, the house right here. Everything we, this is a bill of sale right here.
Okay, what, what basis on that demolition?
I can't, can you look for me, please?
Ms. Graham, let me let Mr. Tate speak, then we'll come back with that, go ahead, Mr. Tate.
Our council...
Uh, uh, council, uh.
I, I didn't buy it from the.
Ma'am, ma'am, hold for a second. Go ahead, sir.
We can, we, we, we go out and do our job.
Okay.
And I want to say this in all honesty. We can keep on, in, on this path and the problem's not going to go away.
And, and I agree.
This particular property is a detriment to the health, welfare, and safety of the public. I won't even know why we're having such an extensive conversation in a real sense because if something happens in and around that property, me as the building official would be called to court. And I'm here to ask you to let's take this house down.
Thank you, sir.
It was boarded up and I got pictures where it was boarded up.
It looked like the front man being bo- boarded up, boarded, he's you, but the back is open.
What'd she say?
The front may have a board up, but the back is not, and the back is falling in.
Yes, it is. It's boarded up, then tear it down.
Uh-huh. It's very, it's unsafe.
They tore this down.
Ma'am.
Who talk it to me?
Right here, right here, in front of you. Right here, right here, right here. Okay, based on what we're seeing here, this property is dismayed. And like, I agree with our, our building inspector. We asked them to do a job. They go out and do the job. And so for us to come back, what we, what I'm going to ask the council to do, we uphold item number seventeen. If you come up with a plan, you work that out with them. But what we're looking at, this property needs to be demolished and started from, from step one, which is ground. So, all right, item number se- seventeen, I declared a public hearing is over on that one. So we need to vote on item number seventeen. Motion?
Move to uphold.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Yu, after the meeting, you can get with our building inspectors now on your plan and they can come up with a plan with that, but we're going to uphold the demolition of that property and that, that should help you.
Item eighteen, resolution declaring authorizing and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
All right. Need a motion?
Move the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
All right. Ma'am Clerk, we have anything?
I have contingencies, but do you want to do these other resolutions?
Yeah, let's do the resolution before we get to contingency. Thank you.
Okay.
I know you got so many, you don't know where to start, right?
We do. We got two from, from Counselor Mitchell, so why don't we start with him? The, uh, first one is a resolution authorizing fifty percent of proposed costs to develop outdoor recreation facilities at Regency Park Community Center be held in reserve to match land and water conservation fund assistance.
Yeah, yeah, we always talk about, you know, other districts, but District Six is in need too. So we're doing some good things in District Six, so. Motion to suspend the rules?
You going to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Counselor Mitchell also has an application for special event retail liquor license doing businesses R and B Blues Picnic at three fifty-five Coosa Street.
Mr. Mitchell.
Um, is any representative here for that event?
That we have to have a public hearing.
All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone speaking in favor of this item or against this item, please come forward. Your name for the record, sir.
Frank Walker.
All right. Declared a public hearing is over. Proper before the council. Need a motion?
Motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, sir. Hey, man, I appreciate that.
June twenty twelve, okay.
And Mr. Calhoun, since you're now the chair, you can introduce this one.
Yes.
It's an application for special events retail liquor license doing businesses. We thank you. Weekend at three fifty-five Comer Street. Thank you.
Move the rules?
Yes, sir.
We got to have a public hearing.
Okay.
I need a representative for, thank you, your name for the record, ma'am?
Icy Von.
I didn't hear you.
Icy Von.
Thank you.
All right.
Any opposition?
Building the one I passed out. I can't introduce it because I'm sitting next to the chair. Yeah, we thank you. You want to tell us what this is funded about?
Yes, it's, um, it actually started last year, um, during the midst of the pandemic. Um, it's an honor and a, and to show appreciation to all essential workers, including law enforcement officers, first responders, military, teachers, and healthcare workers and really anyone who was working during the pandemic. Um, last year, we had Chrisette Michelle. It was just a one-day event. This year, we're doing a full weekend. Um, the concert is going to feature Cee Lo Green as our headlining artist and Taylor Hicks. Um, and then also local performers, sold-out groove, and some other local, um, entertainers. We'll also have some other events leading up to the concert. We're going to have a cigars and civics event. And we're also going to have a roundtable on that Friday. And then on that Sunday, we're going to have a community block party on Comer Street. And, um, we just welcome everyone to come out and support this event. We're going, we're giving away free tickets to essential workers and first responders. We're also giving away, um, or will have reduced price tickets to, um, a limited amount. But, you know, TD Legacy, the owners are Derek Montgomery and Terrence Baldwin. And this is just something that we want to continue in the community each year, so, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
Thank you.
Need a motion?
Move the rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous.
The mayor wanted me to ask if he could get up and sing with Cee Lo Green. He was.
Oh, look, absolutely. Ma- uh, Mayor Reed will actually be at the event that day.
Okay, you look all right.
Yes, we, we would love to have Mayor Reed, uh, Mayor Reed up there dancing, doing a little jig and all of you as well. So y'all, I'll come out.
Move to adopt.
Motion. All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
And council and Mr. Mayor, I've had one request. Um, uh, Counselor Lyons asked me to read this to you today. He's requesting twenty-five hundred of contingency funds to the Safe Youth Camp and they are a vendor.
What is it?
Safe Youth Camp.
Where is that?
It's a five oh one C three. They, they've been vetted and they're on our vendor list.
Oh, he's asking us to give him money?
Twenty-five hundred contingency funds.
A piece?
No, just his allocation.
Oh, I was talking to her right there.
Okay.
All right, that's going to be in our contingency funds when you, that's one that we're adding?
Yes, that, that's the only one I had and we didn't have time to get it up to the mayor because he gave, he sent it by email today.
Okay, need a motion?
Oh, hold on.
Okay, you got it. Yes, ma'am.
No, that's it.
All right. Motion?
Motion to, uh, suspend the rules?
Just doing my short job.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Got anything else, Madam Clerk?
That's all.
All right. Speak to us tonight on our public communication done agenda items. We have first, uh, Ms. Audrey Edwards. Audrey Edwards.